We'll call this meeting of the New York City Council to order. I welcome the administration, the rest of council, the members of the Social Service Committee, and any of our audience. With that...
All right. Mayor Cook.
Here.
Councilwoman Groh.
Present.
Councilman Bond.
Here.
Councilman Shami.
Here.
Councilwoman Wright.
Here.
Councilman Lindsay.
Here.
Vice Mayor Eggleston.
Here.
All seven present.
With that, we'll have the invocation of Chief Trust.
Father, thank you for the day. You many blessings, and we thank you for the wonderful reign where we need it so. Lord, we pray that you be in this meeting, and we pray that you let that perfect will be done. We thank you for the citizens that have volunteered to step up for this committee. Bless our first responders, our troops and their families, in Jesus' name. Amen.
(Inaudible) of the United States of America, and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have no minutes, so we can excuse that. Communications, city manager report, committee reports. Anybody from the public got anything to say? Guess not.
Go ahead if you do, Dylan.
Resolutions and no ordnances none. Okay. We will go into the additional city business, which is the appointment of the Social Service Commission members. Do you wish to swear a men?
Okay.
If you all will arise.
Just going to do one swearing in. So as I say, A, state your name. We'll just go down the table. And then as I read a section, then you can all repeat back at the same time versus doing every single person. So I.
I.
Kelly Craybacher.
Ray Millis.
Courtney Casco.
Kelly Dupuy.
Pat Craybacher.
John Craybacher.
Michael Barclay.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
Or affirm.
Or affirm.
To support the Constitution of the United States.
Support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Ohio.
The Constitution of the State of Ohio.
The Charter.
The Charter.
And all the ordinances of the City of New Carlin.
And all the ordinances of the City of New Carlin.
And then I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
Honestly and impartially.
Honestly and impartially.
Discharge the duties of my office.
Discharge the duties of my office.
To the best of my abilities, so help me God.
To the best of my abilities, so help me God.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
With that, more.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council, members of the public, our new commission. Thank you all for being here tonight. The first thing on the list tonight is to elect a president, a vice president, and a secretary. So amongst all of you, we are looking for the nominations for your president. So who would like to start those nominations?
I would like to nominate Mike over here.
Okay.
For? President.
Any other nominations?
There's a second.
My second.
Oh, didn't hear you, ma'am. I'm sorry.
Oh, I will.
Are there any other nominations?
Do you have any words of self-defense?
I was going to run for vice president, not president.
Okay. Okay. Then we'll call the vote. So we need a motion. Would anybody like to motion to nominate Mr. Barclay as the president?
They had a motion and a second.
His first is the motion.
Okay. So I'll take the vote. Mr. Elam? Well, I'll call out each person's name for a yea or an aye.
Yea.
Okay. Mr. Stefano?
Yes.
Ms. Cassa? Mr. Pete?
Yes.
Ms. Craybacher?
Yes.
Mr. Craybacher?
Yes.
And...
Do I get a vote?
Stay.
You can vote.
Welcome, Mr. President. Thank you very much.
Yep. Happy to do it.
Okay. Now on to vice chair. We need a nomination for vice chair. Courtney is nominating herself. I second.
I second.
Mr. Craybacher, second. Mr. Elam? We're going to call the vote.
Aye.
Okay. Mr. Stefano? Ms. Dupuy?
Yes.
Ms. Craybacher?
Yes.
Mr. Craybacher?
Yes.
Mr. Barclay?
Yes.
And Courtney abstain.
I.
And now we need a nomination for secretary.
I would like to nominate myself.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay. We're going to call the vote. The nomination is for Mr. Dupuy to be the secretary. Mr. Elam?
Aye.
Mr. Stefano?
Aye.
Ms. Cassa?
Yes.
Mrs. Craybacher?
Yes.
Mr. Craybacher?
Yes.
Mr. Barclay?
Yes.
Okay. All right. That is all set, ready to go. Welcome. Thank you all. Okay. So the next order here tonight is for city council to begin discussions with the Social Service Commission to discuss the expectations of the committee. Attached in the packet, there was kind of an outline that we put in the newsletter that's coming up as kind of a guide to this. And feel free, members of council, to begin those conversations.
Anyone wish to address? Go ahead, Kathy.
Yeah, I was just wondering how you are expecting to take the calls. Do you want them to come to the city building? Do you want a special phone number? Do you want them to go to one specific person? Or I don't know if you had an idea for how you're going to do that?
I guess I understood, I thought from maybe reading the commission charter, that a lot of the calls would go to the police and fire units, who would then contact the commission if there was a need. You know, that's what I thought, that you guys were primary...
It all depends on what it is, Mr. Craybacher. If it's a, not a health issue or something like that, we wouldn't... If it's just something like repair or something like that, we wouldn't get that. I would say it would probably be best that we maybe had a working separate number. That way, we don't want to bog down first responders' phone time for emergencies. If there was a number in place that someone could contact one of us, that way we could address that need outside of emergency personnel.
So how difficult would that be to get onto the phone system of the city?
I think we could probably get a cellphone after running it by the manager. And I'm pretty sure we could probably get a cellphone for whoever you guys want to have it, but we'd have to know who that is. More than likely, the president.
Well, does anyone...
Yes, go ahead, sir.
Does everyone work?
I don't. Not right now.
No.
We're retired.
We do have a cellphone for, like, after hours for, like, the water department. If this is decided that there is a cellphone, maybe you all can decide to be on call each week. So you take the calls this week, you take the calls next, and they can formulate that plan hour-based.
There would have to be a schedule, so whoever gets the, whoever, the after-hour number would know who to contact.
I would be willing to make that schedule for everybody, so.
Okay. Well, you all have to decide that schedule as a group.
Okay.
And you can do that in your organizational meeting as we move forward.
Okay.
Sounds good. So Kathy, one thing I did not see in the chart that we were given, I did not see a term of service. Was that, did I miss it?
I don't recall sanity there, honestly.
So I didn't see a term of service in there.
I could help with that, too.
Okay, go ahead.
So attached to the packet that you have tonight, there's a sample bylaws in there from the Parks and Rec Board.
I did see that.
So in your organizational meeting, you're going to set up your own bylaws, and you can decide your terms of services in your bylaws.
We were hoping you'd just stay definitely...
Yeah, I find that's what I thought, too.
I think for Parks and Recs, it was four years.
Yeah, I think that is what it was.
But, you know, Planning Board, BZA, is two years. So it really all depends on you all deciding as a commission in your bylaws.
Would it be best to kind of stagger the terms? Have some for two years, some for four? And that way, you've got a continuity.
I believe however they want to put that together, they can do that.
But that'd be kind of hard, since we're all in the same, in the same time.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If it came in staggered, that would be perfect.
Well, that could still work that way.
How could it work?
You would just say, a member's Craybacher, one, and Chelsea, and the other gentleman down there have four-year terms, and the rest of us have two-year terms, or something like that.
Yeah.
Or you could have your officers in it four years, and the rest of the members could be four.
Well, that might be better.
You could stagger your officers.
Yeah.
There's ten ways to do it.
Yes. You all decide that. The interesting thing that you can take home with you and decide that, you know, when you come together as a commission, you know, in the future for your next organizational meeting, you can start building those processes.
Whenever we make an agenda. Go ahead, Mr. Bond.
I guess, I just want to say, welcome. I'm excited for you guys to be doing this. I'm very thankful that you guys have all stepped up and wanted to help out in this way. My expectation, I guess, from this is to hopefully see you guys pull in help from the other local churches, so you're not doing all the heavy lifting, or feel like you have to do all the heavy lifting, because it's my belief, and from talking to other people, that there's a lot of people that want to help with this and want to help with needs in our community. So I guess my hope is that you'll put together a structure that will be able to utilize those other gifts and abilities in our town here, and really be able to maybe show that citizens can help citizens with these things. And government doesn't really need to be involved in helping with these true needs. And, you know, many of you, I think, attend some of the local churches here, and it's my belief that you also, in meeting a need, you can also bring the one thing that everybody needs, and that's the gospel. And so in meeting those physical needs or hard structure needs, if it's a repair or whatever, you also, I believe, have the opportunity to be able to help a spiritual need that people have. So I'm excited for you. I think this is going to be great. If there's anything we can do for you, you know, if there's something in your way that you feel like legislatively, we can...
Remove.
Remove.
Or do.
And if it's cumbersome to you, let us know. We'll work on that, so.
I had a question, basically, going on that. I've been actually talking with a bunch of youth groups, and we also have an arrow service club at Tecumseh. But there are also other schools that have, like, clubs and stuff where they have to get government hours. Is that opposed to using other schools that are locally, like Northwestern, or does it have to be in?
You guys would decide that.
Yeah. I mean, if the parents are up for it, I mean, that, yeah, that's kind of in your guys' realm, really, to decide what you need and how to make it work, so. Yeah, I mean, that's...
They're willing to help.
I was going to say, the National Honor Society is always looking for volunteer hours.
Yep.
I'll remember that.
So maybe if you find a project, you'll have younger people to help you do it. And the, I will tell you that you have two people on your board that has vast knowledge in getting people together and getting people to help. And I'm not going to call them out. They know who I'm talking about. You guys will figure it out whenever you guys meet, you know. But like we've said, if there's anything you guys need from us, don't hesitate calling the mayor.
Or the vice mayor.
Yeah, Peggy does all the light work.
You know, if you need a louder move for something, call Peggy.
Well, and I will give you this for, I guess the word is information. The city manager has handled a couple of incidents just recently that came up. One of them involved a family that was outside of town, and knowing full well that when you're dealing with city tax money, there's not a whole lot that can be done. However, he was able to solidify a situation on both parties and got it handled. From now on, I'm assuming it's all going to be dumped in your laps. Some of what he did, he was able to provide them with a means of housing. The second group needed some money to get to a location for their health, safety, and well-being. And this was all handled within his realm. But it was something that people had apparently heard what we were trying to do, kind of jumped the gun, but it did happen. Now, I also have talked with him about the fact of getting the possibility of a little bit of money set up, and maybe even a credit or debit card. So if, for example, in the middle of the night, you needed somewhere for people to go, or you needed food, clothing, or something, that maybe the person that was on duty at that point in time could provide that as a stopgap measure. Then the next day, do your magic and work it out a little bit better with the groups. Anyone else got anything for the group that you want to approach?
Congratulations. So Bill, is there going to be something in the budget for us to operate out of? Or is there, what's happening?
We don't know that yet. To answer for Mr. Cook.
I will say at this point in time, there have already been, I guess the word is, some donations talked about, that you will have in a fund, and it was thought about the possibility of taking that donation down to the bank, then working with a credit card or debit card off of that donation. So consequently, this is in the works. And the budget, I'm not just sure how that's going to play into place, because with the city undergoing our budget for next year, I'm not sure how the city manager intends to handle that part of it. But there will be, I guess the word is, funds set up for these donations.
All right. The next question is, do we just deal with residents? Or you talked about he went outside of the city.
Well...
So do we, where is that bounded?
In answer to your question, I don't think these donations are going to stipulate that. If it's tax money, yes, it can only be done with citizens. The donations, I would assume, and I would assume this is going to be up to you folks, whether or not you could help somebody outside of the city.
And that would, if I may...
Go ahead.
That would probably be all set forth in your bylaws and stuff, in your rules and regulations that you seven come up with. But as most of you probably know, council has to approve your bylaws where they go into force.
Yeah, yeah.
And council also has the authority to delete or add or change anything in your bylaws that we as a council don't like, or it's conflicting. Like, if you say we can use city taxpayer money for whatever, that's probably going to be a no on all of our parts, because we have to be very careful with taxpayer money. You know, we might be able to use it with people in the city, but that's still in the air.
The other standpoint of the fact of it is, there are several people that have already committed to donations.
Okay.
In my own mind, I don't believe that they would differentiate between citizen versus non-citizen if you had to give somebody something. And I go back to the fire department many, many years ago. Every Christmas, the fire department would get together and picks up food boxes for people. We went out and took, I guess the word is, list of what the kids would need that were in those families, sizes. There were a lot of the people that had talked about these donations that have been, I guess the word is, benefactors on that situation, and went out and shopped for toys, kids' clothing, other clothing if it was needed, out of their own pockets. Now, I don't know whether the fire department is still doing that, or whether you've dropped that.
We, the past few years, we, what we've tried to do is do an adopt a family, that type of thing, and donate it to that, whether it be in the city or...
But these are some of the things that...
We'll work on that.
Has happened in the past. And I, again, I believe that if you get into a situation that is going to be in town or out of town, I think city manager has the leeway to come to those people that said they would donate in order to make it happen, so.
Oh, I have one, actually, two more questions. The city manager's not here tonight. And I know that, Don, and from working with him in the past, that, you know, this is something that's near and dear to his heart. And I understand he also needs to largely get out of the business. However, I understood initially that he was going to try to attend our meetings. Is that true?
He is tied up tonight with something that his daughter...
Personal stuff.
So, and he may try and stop in here after his meeting is over with.
Okay.
Well, I think, I mean, I think he's an essential...
He's definitely involved.
For us to have dialogue with. And then...
To answer your question, Mrs. Craybacher, I believe the manager is planning on attending, for a while, your meetings to see the progress and stuff. But I'm sure he'll also be available by phone if need be.
Yeah. So that is my second question. I'm going to go back to that first question I asked, because when I, when you guys were envisioning the commission, you know, you were talking about the calls that the police department gets, and the calls that the fire department may get, or that may come into the city. And I, I guess I'm thinking that people don't change their habits of calling, and I'm hoping that those calls will still be forwarded to us if the officer takes a report or whatever.
Yeah, if we find, if we find a need, you know, of course, it'll come to me, and I'll make the phone call to your edge of the commission.
Yep. I have a comment about that, too. So from my department, you know, planning and zoning, code enforcement, there's got to be a personal responsibility there. You know, you can keep doing and doing and doing for people, but at the same time, they're going to have to make that call themselves. So most of the time, what you're going to see is us giving out a phone number for them to call you. And I would think that could be the same a lot from his end as well, because we can't be using city taxpaying dollars to use our labor to do that kind of thing. So they're going to have to take some personal responsibility for themselves and contact the commission. There are cases even from my department where that may not happen. I have a case right now that's really hot, that I know this person does not have the ability to make that outreach. And so we would have to get more involved in reaching out to that person. But overall, for the most part, they will be reaching out to you directly.
I think also, on what you're talking about, the people reaching out, when people are, in my experience, when people are down and out, they won't ask for help because they feel it's shameful, and, you know, maybe it's not in their DNA to ask for help.
Right.
So if something comes into the fire chief or through a police officer, I'm sure if it's a need there, somebody will reach out to you, or the departments themselves, or somebody, you know. Same with council. If council runs across somebody or finds something that we need, that you guys probably should look at, we'll make that phone call also.
So I guess, even digging a little deeper with stuff like that, I think, once you've figured out, what are your outcomes? What outcomes do you want for food security, housing support, senior outreach, youth and family services, crisis response? When you figure out your outcomes and what you want for those outcomes in each one of those categories, and what you're going to deliver to them, that will help kind of figure out, are we having them call? Are we calling them? All those things will play a factor. So I think that's where your brain should be thinking about for the next month or so, is what are your outcomes? What do you want for this department? What do you want for this commission in those categories? And then what are you going to deliver in order to achieve those outcomes?
Mr. Bond?
To go back to, I forget if it was John's question, or Mrs. Craybacher's question, but about the outside-the-city thing, I guess, one thing I encourage you guys to think about is maybe start in the city. Obviously, being a Christian myself, when I come across a need, I feel like God has kind of put that person in my path, and I kind of need to help with that. So from a personal standpoint, I don't want to say, no, you're not allowed to ever help with somebody's need that is brought across your path. But as far as the commission goes, I guess, it would be nice to be able to put together a well-oiled machine here in the city that then maybe could be duplicated to some other neighboring communities. And you could say, hey, this is what we've done, this is how we do it, this is what works best, and be able to kind of duplicate that. But also, you know, I guess, don't take on too much too quick, too, you know?
Right.
You know? So, which, it's easy, there's a lot of needs out there, but I guess that would be my encouragement, is just, don't take on too much.
I think the hardest part of the whole thing is knowing where your limit is.
Mm-hmm.
You know, when you start a business, you want to do everything.
Yep.
You want to do everything, and the same thing here. I know everybody wants to do everything, but you're not going to be able to help everybody. You know, that's been, I think, with disaster ministries, we can't do everything.
That's what I was kind of thinking. What if we, what if we sat, like, when we do meet and we sat aside, what if we broke it down into designated people handle certain calls? So like, if there's like a youth crisis, then one of us would, you know, tend to the youth need, or if there was a senior service problem, then one of us could go and address that, instead of all of us, you know? The on-call thing is a good idea, but it really would depend on, because all of us have different experience in different areas, and how to handle different things. So, I mean, that's something that we could look at, too, is putting certain people in charge of certain calls, because if they're going through someone where someone's going to call us, then if we have a designated person, then we don't really have to worry about someone being on call. It's like, okay, well, this is a youth crisis, so we need to contact so-and-so. So that, so that way, there's not, there, I don't think we would run into the issue of taking on too much at once. Because the need, the need is always different. One day, it might be a youth, one day, it might be a senior, one day, it might just be someone that's hungry. So, I mean, we could fill it, fill the need that way, too.
Well, the case I was just talking about, the hot case, covers all those categories.
Oh. Well, then we'd have to come together mighty for that one.
And that's where you all communicate. You figure out your communication style. So if it's your week to take that call, maybe it's just an email to everybody, hey, I just took this call, this is the stats that I have on this individual, and everybody starts plugging in, you know? And that might just be across the board, because I know Mr. Stefano, he has resources for youth services and parenting services. So does Mr. Barclay. So their services might work. You saw, I mean, not, it's not a one-size-fits-all. And so you might need your whole team to come together to fix that one youth service issue. Your whole team may need to come together and fix that one senior crisis. So just keep that in open mind on how you want to communicate with one another. I think just being on-call is just taking the call in, and then figuring out how you want to communicate it to the rest of your commission.
I guess what I've learned in my life, whether it's in my contracting officer job, where you had a huge team that you worked with, and everybody tended to specialize in different fields, you know, logistics, engineering, design, finance, all that. But, you know, you really, as a team, you have to learn from the collective experience that we bring to the team. And then maybe there is a discussion on a particular action that you're leading, but she would want to be open to the inputs that other people have and other ideas. Like, we were talking when, you guys were talking about appointing a commission, and I think that next day, we learned something about a group that was, it's an NGO, like, that was providing services in exactly that area that you guys had brought up. So, I mean, keep your ears to the ground, you know, find out where you can get resources or get the expertise that you might need, and then make the best decision that you can.
That's it.
Ben, you were talking about churches, you know? I never run a limit in churches. You know, we got an active Rotary group.
Sure.
Active Optimists.
Yep.
You know, even a young-
The Quoners are on, too?
Yeah, the Junior Optimists is now the Arrow Service Club.
Oh, is that what it's called?
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely. Anybody that wants to help-
So, if anybody wants help, you know, and if they have the abilities, you know, to do that.
Absolutely.
And you'll find, too, that a lot of the resources, maybe not a lot, but some of the resources you're gonna utilize are not here in New Carile.
Right.
You know, St. Vincent de Paul for furniture and different things, and so, you know, you may have to reach outside of the city of New Carile to build those relationships and to look for other services, too.
Yes, my understanding is, from this meeting, we get to decide as a team when our next meeting's gonna be.
Yes.
And I think realistically, my experience is, when you're starting a new thing, if you just start throwing jobs at it, then it's not gonna give us a chance to get organized and start to build that structure.
Correct.
So, as much as Don is busy and probably not home enough, because he's, because he's just like so busy and he's doing everything, I think it would be wise for, for him to continue to manage things in that realm, at least until we can have our next meeting, and so maybe we need to move that up.
And that's the case. We're not gonna throw you to the wolves.
Okay, sweet.
You know, and I've had a huge, huge part in this.
Yeah.
You know, so, my, my background comes from, you know, the last nine years of working in nonprofit that deals with these kinds of situations.
Gotcha.
You know, so I can help with the structure of your commission.
Cool.
You know, he's gonna have, you know, some, a big hand in all this as well, so you're gonna get both of us, and we're gonna continue to do what we do right now until you guys are pretty well-formed-
Gotcha.
-and have your things together. We're not gonna throw you to the wolves.
Sure.
You know, it's not gonna help anybody, so you're right, we wanna make sure-
We gotta form and storm and norm, you know, that, that's what we're gonna be doing.
Right, right, exactly. Yeah.
I mean, trying to understand each other, that's, that's good.
Yes.
It just takes a little bit of time.
For sure, for sure.
So, definitely get your feet wet first, don't over, because everybody will get overwhelmed, and then we get overwhelmed, and then the mayor gets overwhelmed, and then Brian gets overwhelmed.
Hmm.
Maybe.
Maybe not in that exact order.
Yeah, it's, now, you guys structured this out, is it gonna be categorized of what services we do, so, and it's, will we advertise that on the newsletter, or?
Yeah, so this is what's going on in the newsletter, this is in your packet tonight.
This was not in the packet, not going, I guess.
It's in a separate email.
It was?
Yes. I didn't see it.
Okay. But just like what Mrs. Kraybacher was saying, people are stuck in their ways, they're gonna call the fire department-
For sure.
...the police department, but if we get this out more and more and more of what actually we can do-
Oh, I have that.
-then I think people-
Is that what you're calling it?
Maybe we should make a magnet.
Do you have a copy of that article?
For the newsletter?
Yeah.
Is, is it not in your packet?
No.
Okay, I'll make sure you get this. Mr. Eland?
I do think it's important that when we start to publicize this on a public level, is that those that are encouraged to call, they need to know that whatever information they bring to us, their name, their address, whatever, their situation, is gonna be, remain confidential. No one else is gonna know what's going on with their situation.
Right, and, and to kind of touch base on that, so when you're in a public forum, because all of your meetings will be recorded, they're all public records-
Yeah.
-you would wanna utilize case numbers or, and not mention names, so you would have a case that you wanna discuss, this individual's assigned this case number, so you're only talking about that case number. So, that goes back into some of this organizational stuff, and the secretary's responsibility of making sure you're keeping your meeting minutes effective, that you're setting the agenda, you're getting with the president, and setting your agenda every month.
Yep.
And in that agenda, you discuss case numbers and what you wanna discuss in open forum and different things. Also, a legal ad has to go out every month, and that's something that we're gonna help you with. Keep in mind, I've been piloting this for a year and a half, okay? So, I've got some really good stuff for all of you, I'm gonna be there in the beginning, and probably for the first good year or so, as you're getting your feet wet and putting all this together. So, you're in good hands, I promise you that, and we'll start off with some smaller cases. We'll start off with some stuff like, hey, so-and-so may, may need some, some outdoor storage and displaced stuff removed, because they're gonna end up going to court. We may look at something like that, as something simple and small, so you can start building your communication skills and building your foundation on how you want to execute these things. Is there gonna be a checklist that covers everything? I doubt it, because you're gonna get hit with something all the time that may not fit into a category, but then you'll note that, you'll talk about it in your meetings on how you wanna address those things as they proceed in the future. So, your bylaws may start this big, but your policy may not be this big.
It's definitely not Groundhog Day every day.
Not at all, it's not at all.
Well, the other thing, as it states in the bylaws that you have a copy of, council will occasionally would like a report of how you're doing, so that we know, I guess the word is just what's going on. Again, I think it will be to the benefit of everybody concerned, and you have talked about confidentiality. You know, these type of things, that report will, of course, be an open session. Again, with the case numbers, the confidentiality is no problem.
Right.
And I don't think any member of council-
No addresses or names or anything like that?
Yeah. I mean, even on the information that was supplied to us, your addresses, phone numbers were all blacked out, which, you know, is, is a good thing in some cases, and others it's not, because if we need to get hold of you, I assume we're gonna have to go through either Brian or the city manager. Go ahead.
So, the, the reason why I brought the confidentiality is that when we're talking about people that may have some shame or feel embarrassed about seeking out help, sometimes what you can find in that is that they, they don't want other people in other business, so if, if they, if they have some reassurance that their, their situation, their information's gonna be confidential, then they're more likely to reach out for help. So, if, if, if we're putting that into publication and they see that, they might feel more comfortable if there isn't any.
Yeah, I agree, and that could definitely be done, because any, if, if somebody were to do a public records request on all the cases that we've had for the last year, they can get the details of the case, redacting person's name, address, phone number, even like with my, my report every month that I present to city council for code violations. It has a case number, an address, the date it was violated, and what the violation was, and that's it. And I get public records requests all the time, asking for the last 30 days of violations, you know, usually from people who wanna market those services. You know, you mentioned, Mr. Mayor, about the reporting process, you know, it's probably prudent for the secretary to make sure that from the meeting minutes, there is a report that's maybe submitted to the president, and the president comes in at the second council meeting of every month and does a committee report, along with, like myself and, and the fire department and the financial department, they commit to do a report as well, once a month at the second city council meeting. Also, I want, there's something I would like to encourage you all to do, too, is to keep track of your statistics. What's working, what's not working? How many people have you helped? What were the outcomes of those, those people that you helped? Were you able to help them? So, we can look at those data, that numbers, and kind of decipher what's working and what's not working, so you know where to apply your funding. And if you're gonna seek grants and different things, those greeners are gonna wanna know, what are your numbers, right? And so, you'll wanna have some, some data collection, and to be able to measure that what you're delivering to achieve your outcomes is actually measurable.
Well, the other part of that-
And possibly, like he just said, too, is your man-hours, how much time are you putting into this? Because volunteer hours does relate to, to-
Grant money?
Grant money, income, yes.
The other part of that, it comes down to the fact that this council is responsible for the taxpayers' money. So, if we have some kind of a report that what you're doing is helping people, it makes it a little easier to sell if we wanna get you more money.
Right, and, and so, there's another process there, too, maybe thinking about, you know, who on your commission is gonna help track as, as your treasurer? You know, who's gonna be responsible for tracking that funding? Who's gonna be responsible for that debit or credit card or whatever that you're gonna utilize? Where's that funding going? Because that's all gonna have to be reported, right? So, think about who's gonna be responsible on your team or on your commission, who's gonna be your treasurer, who's gonna be reporting that information? So, that's something that you're gonna wanna consider as well.
Well, I think we should make a date, you know, make a time to, everyone meet together.
You'll also need to keep minutes of your meetings.
Yeah. Meeting minutes are, and, and you'll have to come up with a process, too, so, and we'll determine this process, I guess, after you decide what day and time of the month you're gonna meet. So, for example, if it's the third Wednesday of the month, you're gonna meet at 6:00 P.M., your legal ad has to go out the first week, because it takes, you gotta have it out at least 14 days. Is it 14 or seven?
I think it's just seven.
Seven days prior to your meeting, so you can put a static-
You said that was a legal ad?
Yeah, so a legal ad, and Kelly, I'll get with you on how to do that. Basically, until you're well-established and you have your own banking app and all this stuff, you'll just send me your legal ad, and I'll, I'll publish your legal ad.
You said 14 days?
I'm sorry?
14 days or seven?
Seven, seven days prior. So, if you're the third Wednesday of the month, you know, how often do you want your agenda? Do you want it 72 hours prior, or do you want it a week prior, so you have time to digest your agenda? And then, do you wanna have your meeting minutes, you know, a week later, or do you want your meeting minutes along with the next month's agenda? You know, so you can review all that a week in advance. For BZA and Planning Board, it's 72 hours, but my personal goal is to get it in their hands within 10 days of our meeting. That's my personal goal. That gives them time to go through the site plans, you know, the code, the variances, all those things, and, and we'll have to factor that into all of your positions, too, how, what is, what you're doing affecting our city ordinances. So, that's why you'll have me there every meeting to help you go through all this stuff. And so, it protects the, the commission, it also protects our residents with that city ordinance. We also have Mrs. Councilwoman Grow, she's, you're gonna be your liaison to city council. She will more than likely be attending your meetings as well, and being there to answer any questions and, and help from the city council's perspective, and I'll let you talk more about that again.
I was trying to get there.
I know you were.
There was so much conversation.
It was a lot, I'm sorry.
And how am I gonna get this in there? So, I'm the liaison between you guys and council, so I'll just be reporting to council any need you guys have or anything like that, and reporting on your progress, things of that nature, which means I'm pretty sure you'll have to include me in your emails, so I know when your meetings are. I'm not there to influence any decisions you make or anything, and I'll only participate in discussion if you guys ask me to, otherwise, I'm just gonna be sitting there and listening and observing and fostering healthy community.
So, are they gonna establish a government email for, or are, are we gonna use our own personal emails? You guys keep talking about emails and communication, I'm kinda wondering.
I'll, I'll speak with Mr. Hall tomorrow, and I'll, I'll email off you and let you know what the hell, what that's gonna be.
Good question.
Yeah, I think it makes, it makes sense to at least have one separate email for the commission, that people, because then people can email in their situations as well, and I think that would be a lot easier to track stuff, because then even if we're working on a case by ourselves, or like a write-up or report, then we can email that to the, like, designated email and have all that electronically to-
Just know that every email's a public record.
Shouldn't everyone have their email?
An email address, so they can communicate back together.
There's that, but just, just know upfront, every email that you send back and forth is a public record.
Yes, do not use your personal email.
Yep.
No, that makes your entire system public record.
Because your personal email, at that point, could be subpoenaed.
Yeah. I think so much- You know, it used to be a lot easier to be on a commission.
Yeah, it did.
I'm sorry?
It used to be a lot easier to serve on a commission.
When she was on Parks and Rec, I think you already thought of that.
Well, we did some really great things, though. That was 25 years ago.
I'm just gonna make a suggestion to the commission, until we get the email situation figured out, just after like what Brian said, he's absolutely right, maybe we should just start a text chat, a text group, just with our personal numbers and tell we get-
You cannot do that.
Yeah, there's no-
Because you will have a quorum, and that becomes a public, you have to do that in public record, yeah.
Okay.
So, four of you can't be together at the same time, at any point in time, unless it's an illegal ad and it's been publicized.
Okay.
Because that's a quorum. That becomes a meeting. If four of you are together, the majority, the quorum is ever together at the same time, that's now a meeting.
That's what, we go through the same, same thing up here.
I mean, we can, not together.
Especially John Kraybacher.
Just four of you.
Only four of you.
Not talk of business.
And, and when we do your organization meeting, we're gonna talk through a lot of these things. I have an agenda for you already for your first meeting, almost ready to go. We're gonna break this down, what you can and kinda can't do, and we'll work through all those things, so you're protected and you don't get yourselves in any kind of trouble, okay? Because you are an extension of city council, so we have to make sure this, this ran very well.
Okay.
Anyone else got anything?
Now, what about advertising this on our personal social networking?
You can, you can-
Like, like about the commission existing and what it does, is-
You can do that.
Okay.
And you can share from city pages, so social media, you can do those things.
Okay.
I would suggest, though, turn off comments, and, and if you get messages, direct messages from stuff like that, that's not a public record, and so your social media is now a public record.
Right, but I'm saying, like, if we just, if we just said, like, hey, they're, you know, like, without mentioning, like, our names or anything like that, make it like a, you know, so that there's not that.
I would suggest that-
No.
I would suggest that you create a Social Service Commission Facebook group or a page, and mark it from that, and then you can share it from that.
Okay.
That's what I would suggest, and the city website can do those things, or the city's social media pages can do those things as well.
Okay.
So, good luck to all seven of you. Well, let's put it this way, if you need advice or answers to questions, I would say probably the first person would be Brian, then go up to Mr. Hall, and last come to council.
Brian always answers his phone, so never doubt that.
And that way, I'm, I'm sure you're gonna get the straight scoop, but some of us at council are not totally aware of everything that you're going to encounter. Together, we could probably figure it out, but, like I say, I think Brian will be your first contact. I leave that up to him and Mr. Hall.
I, I don't mind at all.
Is there anything else for the committee?
Yes, they need to decide on a month, monthly meeting day, day of the week and time.
Well, how about if we do that in our first meeting?
You would need to do that tonight, so we set that first meeting.
Okay.
Monday's purely work week, et cetera.
I can't, I can't do the first Mondays of the month.
About Wednesdays.
The Mondays-
I can't do Wednesday or Thursday.
-here are pretty much out, which is the council and, and meetings.
And so is the third Tuesday and the third Thursday.
So, they've, they've got meetings here, the first and third Tuesdays?
Yes.
So, and you've got the magistrate on Wednesday, what's that, the first-
That's not here, that's-
Downtown.
So, the Wednesdays would be good.
So, the third Tuesday and the third Thursday and Mondays are out.
Yeah, if we did the second Tuesday, that could work.
Second Tuesday?
Yeah. As long as I know in advance, that would be okay. Tuesdays are date night, so as long as I got a little bit of lead time, then we can switch it to a different day.
Bring your wife to date night and come here.
Hey!
That'd be the shortest term of all time.
How great is that?
Now, I, I do have a question. I know, I know we said we'd talk about it, but when it comes to attending meetings, so it comes to attending meetings, so with my son, with my son being involved in sports and then being involved in the PTO, is there like a, do you have to be like at every meeting? Like, not, I'm not, not like our meeting, but I mean, do we have to be at every like city council meeting?
No.
Okay, okay.
Just your.
We're not getting paid.
Yeah, just your meetings.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
Decide by the bylaws.
And you can decide that in the bylaws, yes.
You are welcome to attend a council meeting.
Yes.
But it's not.
Okay, okay. A bit more midlife.
First wives.
So what day of the Thursday?
Sounds like second.
Second Tuesday of the month.
Second Tuesday of a real.
If you fly, you do ice cream for a year.
All right.
I can't, I cannot do second Tuesdays in a month.
Okay, so what's your counter?
I can do Wednesdays. I can do any other day of the week, but I cannot do Tuesdays.
Okay.
Date nights on Tuesday over here.
Do Thursday?
Can we do any Thursday? You can do the first, second, or last Thursday of the month.
Is that?
You want to do the first Thursday? Can we do the first Thursday?
First Thursday?
We can always.
First Thursday.
So your first meeting will be October 2nd?
No.
No.
I can't move that fast. We would have to set that for, well, first off, I need a motion for the first Thursday of the month. I need a motion.
Motion for meetings on the first Thursday of the month?
Okay. And I second?
I second.
Without checking his calendar, he's seconding.
Okay, and then.
I can make any day.
We have to read all this down real quick. Okay, we're going to take a vote. Mr. Eland, yes. Mr. Stefano?
Aye.
Yes.
Mr. Pui?
Yes.
Mrs. Kraybacher?
Yes.
Mr. Kraybacher?
Yes.
And Mr. Barclay?
Yes.
Now what time?
No.
We should have put that in the motion.
After the, after the second.
I missed that opportunity.
After the second vote here, I kind of.
Now I've got to do a second vote. Or can we just redo the first vote?
Six?
All right.
Six.
Six or 6:30 is fine with me.
Six or 6:30 is fine.
Six?
Six.
Cool.
Six?
Mm-hmm.
Six o'clock?
Six o'clock.
Do I need to call another vote for that? Okay.
I haven't heard a motion yet.
I'll make a motion that our time be 6:00 o'clock.
I'll second it.
On the first Thursday.
They're just adding to it.
All right, we're going to call the vote 6:00 PM. Mr. Eland?
Aye.
Mr. Stefano?
Aye.
Ms. Castell?
Yes.
Mr. Pui?
Yes.
Mrs. Kraybacher?
Yes.
Mr. Kraybacher?
Yes.
And Mr. Barclay?
Yes.
Even if those two knows.
Next question, sir.
Yes.
Where are they going to meet at?
Here.
Is it available?
Yes.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
And if that changes, if it's rented, we can go there. We can always use the firehouse if we need the.
The library's open too. They have a conference room.
We don't, yeah, we'll call one of these three.
Okay.
For.
Yeah.
All right. I don't have anything else.
So first meeting set for when? November?
November 6th.
November 6th.
November 6th.
Sorry, guys. If this was planning, I'd have all that's written out in me, and she's got.
She's on her third.
Aren't you glad she's?
Yeah.
So is that November 6th?
Yes.
Yeah.
At 6.
That's ridiculous.
Okay, we're good. Sorry, didn't mean to mess that one up, please.
Okay, you're all done?
I brought that.
All right, we got a couple other items. Chief, you got something?
Yeah, I wanted to find out from the council if you guys wanted to continue as you did last year, being part of our open house for Fire Prevention Week. It will be Saturday the 11th, from noon to 4:00. Last year, guys, we, you guys were there. We had a table for just for you guys inside the training room. And I also too, you guys donated, I think, $200 to the farmer for help, to help with, because we do hot dogs and stuff for the citizens.
This is a firehouse or open house, or?
Yes, sir.
What time was it again?
Noon to 4:00.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to donate $200 to the Fire Department for whatever they deem to buy for refreshments.
Sir. Thank you.
Do I have a second?
Yeah.
Chris?
Councilwoman Wright?
Yes.
Councilman Lindsay?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Aggleston?
Yes.
Mayor Cook?
Yes.
Councilwoman Grow?
Yes.
Councilman Bond?
Yes.
Councilman Shamy?
All right, since that passed.
Excuse me, sir.
Go ahead.
Time again, sir? 12 to 4?
12 to 4.
Thank you, sir.
It'll be basically the same as every year, basically the stuff for the kids. We're going to have games for the kids. We're also going to be doing raffles. We've got a lot of stuff donated from businesses in the city for the raffles. So we'll also be doing that. Plus, we're going to have our stuff out to show the citizens how much it's costing to run the Fire Department right now.
Okay, with that, as you all know, the Heritage Flight is recognizing Lowell McLaughlin. I would like to make a motion that we also honor him with a proclamation.
Sir.
Got your second?
Uh, Councilwoman Wright?
Yes.
Councilman Lindsay?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Aggleston?
Yes.
Mayor Cook?
Yes.
Councilwoman Grow?
Yes.
Councilman Bond?
Yes.
And Councilman Shamy?
Yes.
All right, I'll take care of having an April draft set. Is there anything else to come before council? Go ahead, Peg.
Do we want to do that at the Heritage Flight, or do we want to do that at a meeting?
I would suggest we do it at a meeting. That way, all council is present for that